I'm you all to the Middleton City Hall. I'm gonna call the meeting of Milton Common Council for October 1st, 2019 to order. And the first item on the agenda is the roll call.
Ramsey?
Here.
Felvin?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Here.
Present.
Present.
So, the next item is the comments from the citizen present, and it's limited to three minutes per person. And we would start with Michael Mayall. State your name and your address as it is today.
Yep. Michael Mayall, I'm H L, and currently my address is 6211 Elwood Avenue. You've all got the letter handed out. I'll make this brief because I know Nancy Reach behind me is just dying to go.
So you mean 15, right?
So, we got the letters, and basically, we do nothing about it. I mean, all of a sudden, it popped out of thin air that we had to change our address. And we had a lot of questions. We were talking to each other. First of all, we're trying to figure out who else got letters. And, you know, we're in 6215, 6211, and 6207. We got letters, and right next to me, as the mayor walked this morning, turns to 63...
6307, I think, is right next door to me. So it changes numbers right mid-block, anyway. The letter states it's for safety reasons, emergency reasons. We'd just like to know why. You know, this started, we understand that the engineers have a problem once it is brought up, because they're just following the ordinances, and they have to deal with that. But after talking to the mayor on Sunday, I guess if he can work with it, we talked about just basically updating the ordinance so GPS can handle the address locations, and we don't have to do anything. Because otherwise, you know, we started just looking at all the stuff we have to go through, changing wills, driver's licenses, where our taxes go. I mean, for part of the year, our taxes are gonna go to a new address. I mean, how are they gonna track that? Are we gonna be, you know, our escrow account? So there's a lot of stuff that was kinda overlooked when the letter was sent out. And, like I said, I talked to the mayor, and I do think that if we could change the ordinance that let GPS take care of the, you know, police and fire safety issue, then we should be good.
Now, Chief, you don't have any issues, right? Or you do?
Police Department does not have an issue with that.
Okay, okay. So, how long have you lived there, Michael?
I'm the youngster. We've only been there 17 years. Nancy's been there 42, and I'm not sure about, Sternad's are in the 30s somewhere, so... But the address has been like that for a long time. We've had the occasion to call an ambulance a couple times, and the police wants, and they all arrived. So, I guess there's no really... It's kind of a stunning thing to happen. But I will yield to Nancy, because I know she's chomping at the bit back here.
Okay, alright. So the next one is Nancy Reish Flannery.
My name is Nancy Reish Flannery, and I've lived at 6207 Elwood Avenue for 41 and a half years. We recently received a letter on September 19th stating our address would be changed effective November 16th. No meeting, no citizen input, and decision was already made. This request seems totally unreasonable, and I feel that we should have been informed that this idea is being tossed around, so we could have brought some solutions forward. As they say, many heads are better than one. When I first moved into our house, the houses across the street from us were all Madison Houses and Madison Addresses. I was told that they were numbered from the Capitol into this area, and Middleton numbered the opposite way. Why now, after 45 years, do we have to switch to the Madison Number System? There are many house numbers out of order in this area, and three homes were targeted. Even if we switch, there will still be 62 and 6300 on our side of the street, and only 6200 on that side of the, the other side of the street. If you go down one more block towards Middleton, you will see 6300 again, and some 6400s. If you go towards the Madison side, you'll see four homes. One is 60, in this order, 6205, 6220, 6201, 6225, 6221. Changing three addresses will not solve the numbering problem. I have lived with this for 41 years and never had a problem. If someone is lost, I have always helped them. The police, fire, and ambulance have never had a problem finding the nursing home in our area. GPS is the new device to find places, not the city map. In fact, if our address gets changed, I will have to call the fire department, because I have a special box on our house with a house key in it, and the fire department has the only key to that box. They know where we live, and they have our address tagged. After receiving this letter, I contacted Thomas Weber on Friday, September 20th, since the letter was signed by him. I requested a meeting, and he told me he only typed the letter, he did not write it. I was told that Gary Huth was the person I should talk to and request a meeting, but that Gary was out that afternoon, and I should leave a voicemail. On Sunday, September 22nd, I called Gary's office, and I left a voicemail to request a meeting to talk over solutions, and talked to him how this got all started. I still haven't received a call back from Gary Huth. On Friday, the 20th, I also called our alder, Katie Nelson. She knew nothing about this letter, and said she would have informed about this, and would be looking into the situation. Katie called me back on Monday, and thank you, and said that Mike Davis didn't even seem to know about it. She further indicated that there could be better solutions than to changing our addresses. She said to hold tight, and we could all try to work this out. The three families are trying to be patient, but it is now October, and the following things need to be changed: driver's license, credit cards, utilities, bank accounts, ordering new checks for multiple accounts, investment accounts, retirements accounts, healthcare, fire department, and 41 years' worth of friends and family to contact. A few questions need to be addressed. How does voting work? We can change our address with the DMV, but we don't get a new driver's license. Are the poll workers just going to believe us that we say we used, that we live at this address now, and you changed it? When applying for any new credit, and they say, "How long have we lived at this address?" What would be the correct answer? Our lives are being turned upside down to accomplish what? If you really want to solve this problem, you need to renumber at least three blocks of residents. Please consider this decision, and let's work on this together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nancy. Next one is John and Kathy Strange.
My wife doesn't wanna come up.
My name is John Sternad. I appreciate you taking the time to let us speak regarding the proposed address change of our home on Elwood Avenue. We have been residents of Middleton since 1986, and have lived at 6211 Elwood Avenue the entire time, a total of 33 and a half years. So there's, I did the math, I didn't realize Nancy had been in her house for 41. We've been 91 years combined between the three of us, so we're all getting old. The letter we received from the Department of Public Works stated that our residence is not in sequence with the remaining parcels in the area. Although the address across the street is a higher address number, the addresses on our side of the street are in sequence, and therefore, we feel that changing our address is unnecessary, and why now? We have had one emergency EMS call since living at this address, and there were no problems with them finding our home. The process of changing our address is an inconvenience that will not only take a great deal of time, but there will be expenses incurred on our part as well. We are asking that the council give some serious consideration to leaving the current address sequence as is. And as a side note, Kathy and I were very disappointed in the way the situation was handled. There may not be any policies or laws requiring you to give prior notice, but it would have been a common courtesy to allow us to have some input in this before receiving a letter in the mail requiring us to change our existing address and telling us that we have 60 days to comply. The way the letter was written made us both feel like we were no longer living in the good neighbor city. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Do you want to address that now?
I do wanna comment, and that letter did go out with my knowledge of it going out. I think it's regrettable that we didn't have some discussion of it first. From my understanding with Gary Huth, he believes he's enforcing the ordinance, and has discovered since a couple of other address problems. And, you know, one of the things that Gary, I believe, or Sean, had suggested to Katie was that the council could modify the ordinance to resolve the problem. There was an email discussion amongst public safety staff with Public Works, and I was copied in on it. The concern was that, primarily from EMS, I think that just a minute or two could, a delay could affect life-saving services. Police and fire, like the chief said, police had no issue because of the ability to find addresses with GPS. I had the same sense from fire as well, but from EMS, there was a bit of a concern. I thought it could probably be overcome, but we haven't really finished that discussion yet.
So I actually walked that street this morning. So the numbers on the west side, that's where they live, they are all in order, not an issue at all. And then on the east side, they are again all in order. So I don't really see the problem here, except that, of course, there are hired numbers on the east side than on the west side, but they've been there for forever. I mean, I don't know whatever, I think we need to look into the ordinance. I don't know if somebody wanted to make a motion here now, or to refer it to Public Works, or whoever it's supposed to be.
License and ordinance committee, too.
Okay, well, so does somebody need to make a motion to...
I'm moved to refer this to ELLNO.
Could I make a comment first?
Oh, go ahead.
Are there any, by any chance, duplicates of the street numbers?
No.
I don't think so. I think they were just out of sequence.
I didn't see any, so...
Well, have you gone several blocks to be sure, since this is where City of Madison...
None of the staff discussions said anything about duplicates. It was all just out of sequence.
And I'm on the other side of the street, so I know that, I know what Katie's dealing with, because we weren't sure if it was my side was having the same issue.
Yeah, 'cause if there were duplicates, it'd have a big problem.
It'd be different, yeah.
So you're on these sides, she's on the...
Yeah, and so there was an early misunderstanding, because they weren't sure which one was the alder, and, um...
Okay, so you...
But her specific, those houses are specifically her side.
So you second the motion, then?
I do second the motion.
Okay.
Both committees, right?
Yes.
Yes.
ELLNO and...
Public Works.
Public Works.
Okay, all, any...
Since it's not on the agenda.
I guess, just, I don't know, I think we can informally ask that these be sent, or looked at by other groups, but it's not on the agenda. Is this something that we can even technically make?
True. Referrals from public comment without any action other than the referral are proper under the open names.
Perfect. We got Larry here.
That's why we have him.
I think he is it. Okay.
Before we vote, I just would like to thank my constituents for their patience with me. I've had laryngitis, and Mike Mayall can attest to the fact that it was absolutely impossible to talk with me on the phone. So, thanks for your patience.
And thank you for coming, too, so, great job. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. So the next one is Joe McDonough. Joe McDonough.
Hi, my name is Joe McDonough. I'm a tailwheel pilot and hangar owner at the Middleton Airport, and I'm here to speak about the grass runway operations at the airport. I very much appreciate having the parallel grass landing area at the Middleton Airport. I use the grass landing area frequently, and I also utilize several other grass landing areas in Wisconsin and nationwide. It's very common practice. At Middleton, I feel it reduces risk in two areas. First off, tailwheel aircraft are safer on the grass. Directional control is easier to maintain on the grass, as it allows tires to slide slightly rather than grab on the asphalt. Secondly, there are no conflicting traffic patterns. I can fly the exact same traffic pattern that the majority of the airplanes fly. Simultaneous landings on the grass landing area on the paved runway do not occur. I exit the grass landing area onto the taxiway, so there is no chance that I will be in the way of a landing or departing aircraft. Also, it is worth noting that there have been no incidents or accidents related to the use of the grass landing area since the Airport Commission gave approval several years ago. When the Airport Commission Chair, John Halick, began discussions on the grass landing area, liability to the city was the primary concern. There are two parts in Larry Beckler's letter to Mayor Bara regarding this issue that stand out to me. The first part states that the city is not a guarantor of the safety of any aircraft using the grass runways, any more than it is a guarantor of the safety of the paved runways. It doesn't seem that there is any defined risk, or difference in risk, between landing on the paved runway or landing in the grass landing area. Second part is a reference to a $500 increase annually to cover liability insurance for the grass landing area. It seems to me that there are solutions available for, to satisfy the city's perceived liability issue. I respectfully ask that when a recommendation is made, that the recommendation is to pursue a solution that keeps the grass landing area open, and includes the grass landing area or areas in the upcoming airport layout plan. I agree with Larry Beckler's opinion that the standards set forth for the airport in Hood River, Oregon, are very sensible starting point for the Middleton Airport. The airports have very similar layouts, and the additional standards set forth have the potential to further increase safety. Thank you for your time on this issue.
Joe, do you, there are two runways. Do you run, do you land on the, on the north side of the paved runway, or on the, on the south side between, which one do you use out of those two?
Well, so initially, when I went to the airport manager several years ago, when I went to Rich Maury, and we started this, we were actually landing on the north side. Unfortunately, there was a miscommunication between Rich and the farmer who leases or maintains that field, and he plowed up, basically, the area that we used that was being, you know, mowed and maintained by the city. So at that point, Rich and I had a discussion, and he said we could begin using the area that was between the taxiway and the runway. And so that's what we've been doing for the last, I think it's been two or three years now. So if the other area became available, and that was the preference, I would use that. Otherwise, I've been using the area that's currently available.
And you're quite happy with that?
Yeah, it's fine for me. It's fine for the group of people at the airport that use it are satisfied with it. It's already mowed and maintained in a way that really, there's no extra work involved. And yeah, I have no, no issues with the current area at all. It's just fine for what we do.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, could I comment?
Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to mention that neither Bill nor I have talked to an insurance agent that's given us a quote for that potential liability. So I'm not sure where that $500 item came from.
I was just referencing the letter that was in the agenda. It's Larry's letter from the mayor.
Can I? I thought Mark had asked you to take that out, Larry, but...
No. What Mark told me is, it was not from the city's liability carrier, but rather from a third-party agent who offers liability insurance. So it was, and I thought I'd made that clear.
Okay.
It's a different carrier, not our current carrier.
So, I'm just saying, I haven't verified that that's true.
I understand.
Okay, so it's set up as speculator, it could be any number. Okay, anybody else who wants to speak? Yeah, go ahead.
Raise this up a little bit. My name is Tripp Stroud. I live on Elwood Avenue. Americans are 25 times more likely to die from gun violence than in any other civilized Firearms are the second-leading cause of death for kids and teens. Gun violence is out of control in this country. Today is the two-year anniversary of the Las Vegas mass shooting, and it is a little past the one-year anniversary of a near tragedy here in Middleton. And at the national level and the state level, nothing has been done to prevent senseless gun violence. In fact, my observation is, the problem has gotten worse. This is the greatest country in the world. We put a man on the moon. We need our political leaders at the state and federal level to take action and have courage to stop the scourge of senseless gun violence in this country. We should be standing here today saying, Americans are 25 times more likely to graduate from college, to vote, to start a family, to open a business. And today, with the resolution that the council is taking up, I look forward to seeing many other political leaders take the same action and speak up for everyday citizens who are affected by this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Really appreciate that. Anybody else who wants to speak? Okay, so the next item is the approval of consent agenda.
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes.
Mayor?
Yeah?
In recognition of Tripp Stroud's comments and his concern, could we move the resolution up on the agenda?
Let's go to the resolution, item number one. Twenty-nine, 2019-36, imploring state and federal governments to take emergency action to address gun violence. It's sponsored by most of the council and the mayor.
Oh.
All the council.
All the council.
All the council and the mayor.
I would move approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, oh, yes.
I would like to ask that when, I am confident we're going to approve this, but that we also include the chief's letter to the community, because the resolution does not address one issue that I'm really concerned about, which is the recognition of gun violence has become the new norm. And I'm saying this because in 2007, this town where I grew up, where Mark Sullivan went to college, Blacksburg, Virginia, where Virginia Tech is, there was a horrendous massacre there. We have just had another massacre in this city. This is not the norm that I grew up expecting to have to live with. And even on a smaller level, I don't know the exact date, but there was a robbery on Junction Road at a filling station. My son was there. He happened to notice the robber going in with an assault rifle, called the police, and had the good sense to leave. But this should not be the kind of normal, normalcy that we're living in. So I really encourage, the chief's letter said it beautifully, I think we need to send that along also.
I agree with Susan. Yes, Emily?
Yeah, I agree, too, and I wanna say thank you to everyone on the council, and to those who wrote it, including the police chief and the mayor, for all of the reasons that Susan said. You know, it's, this is a hard day in America, and we wanna do really good things. And I admire that every one of you had the courage to stand up to this, and to do it together, and I thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else who wants to...
May I ask, Susan, did you want to amend the resolution, or do you just want to have the chief's statement, along with the resolution, sent to our state and national representatives?
I think I would like the resolution amended to say, to include sending the chief's letter. I don't know that amending the resolution specifically, because he very eloquently got the concept of new normal across.
So how about we pass the resolution, you include that letter along with it?
Yeah, just a statement saying the letter is also included.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all...
I'm just proud to be on a council that all agrees on this.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, yes.
Very quickly, just, I hope that, as Tripp said, if enough people at the city level send resolutions like this up, maybe that will help give state and federal politicians the support they need to do what's right here. And, and so, I know it's just, you know, a municipality, I don't know that this fixes the problem, but hopefully, it's a drop that combines with a lot of other drops to make a flood. So, I'm also very happy that everybody on this common council appears to be voting the way that I think they're going to vote.
Any other comments? I want to say thank you to Tripp. He was the one who actually initiated it to begin with, so, thank you. So all those in favor of the motion, and also including the letter from the chief, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay, we are back to the proclamation. Do we have Mindy here? It is the proclamation in honor and celebration of the 10th anniversary of the Milton Community Whereas, the Milton Community Orchestra was founded in 2010, when local magician Mindy Ferranto and Larry Bavik organized area musicians to form a new local orchestra. And whereas, over the past decade, the Milton Community Orchestra has given almost 50 performances, and has grown into a locally recognized orchestra, attracting acclaim from audiences, critics, and artists. And whereas, today, the MCO is comprised of over 90 volunteer musicians, including local music teachers, active and retired professional musicians, and talented community members from all backgrounds. And whereas, the orchestra performs five concerts annually at the Milton Performing Arts Center, and admits all students to its performances free of charge. And whereas, in recognition of the contribution to the arts made by the volunteer musicians, soloists, and conductors, board, managers, and other volunteers in our community, and whereas, in recognition that Steve Kerr has been conductor of the MCO since its inception, and that he was, he has written a new orchestra piece titled "Good Neighbors," honoring both the city of Milton and the 10-year anniversary of the MCO. And whereas, in 2019-20, the MCO celebrates its 10th anniversary season. I have been to some of their performances, and you should too, it's really excellent. Now therefore, and Larry agrees, too, so, now therefore, I, Gurdeepa, Mayor of the City of Milton, proclaim the week of October 9th, 2019, to be Milton Community Orchestra Week in the city of Milton, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing this organization and its outstanding contribution to the arts in our city. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Milton Common Council this first day of October 2019. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I second.
All those in favor of approving this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to the agreements. Consent of the collateral assignment of dead agreement from Milton Market LLC to Starian Bank.
Move approval is recommended by Finance. Second.
Any questions or comments, just the housekeeping. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to item number two. Public sanitary sewer and water main easement agreement with Conservancy Bend Residences LLC and Conservancy Town Homes LLC.
Motion to approve the sewer and water main easement agreement for Conservancy Bend Residences and Conservancy Town Homes LLC.
Need a second.
Second.
Subject to city attorney...
Subject to city attorney review.
As always, subject to the city attorney's review and approval.
One minor issue that needs to be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve this public sanitary sewer and water main easement agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. On to the budget. Re-allocation of the 2019 capital budget funds related to the Water Walter Bowman Aquatic Center.
Move approval is recommended by PRFC and Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number two. Authorization to use remaining sire replacement capital budget, capital budget funds for on-base enhancement and paperless meeting packets.
Move approval is recommended by Finance. Second.
You want to explain it so that they know what it is?
Yes, please.
I will not explain the contents of the IT request, but the Finance recommendation was to get additional information in terms of Wi-Fi capability so the whole thing would work.
I think the actual motion that Dan made, correct me if I was, I'm wrong, Dan, was to approve conceptually.
Right.
Subject to our figuring out a Wi-Fi solution that could accommodate the purchase of the equipment, but not to buy the equipment before that we have secure Wi-Fi.
Right. That's exactly what the motion was. That's what I said.
Okay. I thought I heard you say that. I just want to make sure.
It needs to be functional Wi-Fi. I've already tonight logged in about three times since council started.
Okay.
So will we have an opportunity to, so, to then re-vote on the actual equipment itself at some point? Or is this approving the purchase of the equipment?
Well, it's conceptual approval. We need to have a plan for Wi-Fi in here that works.
Sure.
Before we say go.
But, yeah, so assuming that, though, that then there's approval of the actual iPads, is that correct?
And, and the improvements to on-base.
It's conditional. So if we can't get that to work, there's no point in having it.
So the question is, do you want this to come back to the council with a report?
I would say yes.
Yes. I think we're looking for a reasonable assurance that if, if the Wi-Fi will work with this thing.
All right. We'll make sure to get somebody from IT then to do that. I think what they might tell you is that the advantage is that they could configure the laptops to work within the chambers, but I'm not sure.
They've worked on your iPod pad several times.
Yeah, I can get logged on fine as a guest, but it dumps me out after 15 minutes. We need an account maybe set up instead of Middleton Gas, Middleton Common Council.
Right. That was to my point. They've done that with my city phone, and it's IoT, Internet of Things. And when they configure it to IoT, it works every time. So I'm hoping that that's what they will be able to do.
Okay, so you'll work on it to sort that out and sort it out and bring it back? Okay, okay. All those in favor, any, yes, yes, Luke.
There are two components to this item. One is for an enhancement to the searching and text capture capability of on-base. That's about $5,000 of the cost. The other is about $12,000, and that's related to the agenda to go and the electronic devices. I, it sounds like the intent is to bring back the paperless packets item with a report on the Wi-Fi. But I was wondering if the intent of the motion is to proceed with the search capability.
Yes, yes. Yes, Luke.
Sorry, wait a minute. Bill, one minute. So it's the, that we're approving of those, on the $5,000, but we're going to re-vote on the $12,000 component, basically?
Not re-vote.
Okay.
Just get assurances that it will work the way that it's been proposed.
Okay.
You are still uneasy about it?
Are you, are you stuck because you're thinking about the hardware versus software?
No, no, no. And I apologize that I wasn't there for the discussion during Finance. But for me, I think I just, the, the purchase of iPads at this particular moment, given the budget constraints, is a little troublesome for me. That's all.
Are you thinking about all the buses we need in town?
I'm just, just thinking about the, the, you know, the, the costs and the need to be fiscally responsible, et cetera. And so that's my.
So just to clarify.
Yeah.
Is a reprioritization of 2019 capital funds. It's not 2020 capital funds are operating. It's just a reprioritization of what's already been.
It's also to eliminate the cost associated with all this paper that we end up throwing away. And the staff time, recycling, yes.
Arguably, though, the 2019, it could be reallocated to something other than iPads, correct?
Yes. But also it eliminates staff time and putting the packets together.
Sure.
Sure. Do we need new iPads for everyone? I know, speaking for myself, I just got a new one, so.
And I just used my laptop.
These would be city-owned.
And they would sit here, but like?
No, they wouldn't sit here. You'd be able to use them through the course of your meetings and take them home and use them, but they would be, each of us would be issued one.
So you could do all the official emails and everything, city-related.
What it does is, and there's other communities that do this. We would certainly not be the first, but what it does is it allows you to have everything right there. All of the city business would be on that iPad, where you wouldn't have to put any of the city business on your own personal machine. So, and again, it eliminates all the paper. It eliminates the staff time of putting together the. The, we were told that with the app that you use, you'd be able to write notes on it. You would be able to, so it sounds as though, and I can't believe I'm saying this because I hate computers, it sounds as though it's pretty user-friendly.
Yeah, from a public records standpoint, this has probably been our most significant year for public records requests. But it, it enables us to have all of that go into the archives so that everything that you send as a city official is.
Everything that you send as a city official then is archived on our server. And it makes it easy for all of you to have everything that you do officially go through that one device and be on our server.
Thank you for that explanation.
Doesn't that already happen on our Outlook account?
For any email that you send of an official basis to someone other than the city hall or city officials, or, you know, that doesn't go through our server, that would be something that you could be accountable for from your own private machine. And so I, it's, it's a much more efficient way, at least for us, to manage public records and for you to be able to do that, to segregate your privacy, private business from public business.
Okay.
And, and didn't you say that the app also has a component where it would be much easier for us to find things that have already been in previous packets or?
Yes, that the search function, that $5,000.
Resource, it would be.
Yeah.
Yes.
Great resource for us.
That'd be helpful. That's the one place I struggle.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Number one. So the next one is Muslanyans, which is item number one. Yehara Clean Compact Sponsorship.
Move approval. Second.
It's $1,000, right?
Yes.
Okay. Coming from Sustainability?
Sustainability.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion for approving the Yehara Clean Compact Sponsorship, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Item number two. Authorization to fill building inspector manager position and approve updated position description. Bill Nysel is retiring.
I'll make a motion to approve the authorization to fill building inspector manager position.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to authorize the fill of the building inspector manager position, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Item number three. Turf-off runway tailwheel aircraft flight operations at Milton Municipal Airport, city attorney.
You all have my letter.
Yes.
Which summarizes a longstanding issue at the airport. I had hoped my letter would be as complete as it could be when I wrote it. I have since discovered that on May 22, 2017, the Airport Commission actually approved turf runway operations at a specific location. And while it did not follow through with the necessary action to get that approved and added to the airport management plan, that was clearly its intention. So I am intending to prepare a supplement to this letter, which will express the agreement I reached with John Halleck, the Airport Commission Chair, which is to do what is indicated in the letter. That is undertake a study of the location or locations for turf runways at the airport, have it engineered by Mead and Hunt, as they do with all other airport improvements. And that if Mead and Hunt identifies one or more locations that would be suitable for turf operations at the airport, takeoffs and landings, those takeoffs and landings would continue through the approval process by the Bureau of Aeronautics and/or the FAA. If the, if Mead and Hunt determines from an engineering perspective that there are no safe locations for turf runways parallel to the main runway, at that point, those operations would terminate. So basically, I'm recommending that the Airport Commission make such a motion, and then we will start the study process with Mead and Hunt, our longtime engineers at the airport. They've been involved in every airport project we've had that I can recall, and determine the status of continuing turf operations. But the bottom line is, based on the fact that there's, there, the turf takeoffs and landings parallel to the runway have been approved by the Airport Commission since May 22, 2017, and there's been no demonstrated safety problems at the airport, it would be unfair to unilaterally terminate turf runway takeoffs and landings before the study has been completed. That's my report.
So what is the action here now? There's no action then?
There's no action for the council. This is, this is informational for the council. Obviously, it'll be the Airport Commission.
So you will recommend, you will work with the Airport Commission, or what is?
Well, I've, I've written one letter. I'm going to write a separate, separate cover letter that explains these further developments I just described.
Any questions or?
Yeah, sir. Yeah, you mentioned that the Airport Commission needs to put this on the upcoming agenda. Has John agreed to do that? Because I know the last, yes, great. Because the last communication I saw was that he had not, so.
Well, we met for an hour today, and he has agreed.
Perfect.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, there's no motion, so nothing. So, okay.
I do.
Oh, sorry, Robert.
I'll just point out that for, again, just for everybody's knowledge going forward, that not only is this a nice courtesy to allow people who are pilots of, of tailwheel planes to continue to do this, as was voted on in 2017, but there are quite a few studies or quite a few data points that seem to show that forcing people to land on, on runways that are paved or, or to preferentially fly against the wind or with a crosswind, to fly on an unpaved runway that's going in the wrong direction could actually add to the risk of, of landing a plane. So obviously, that's something that the Airport Commission will deal with as well, but it's, it's more than just a convenience to the, the pilots who fly these types of planes.
It's a safety issue. You're absolutely right. Any other questions or comments? Well, I guess I was going to say, all those in favor of the discussion as well. Okay, we move on to the ordinances, and Larry's going to handle this one. The ordinance to amend parking restrictions on Lee Street, and this is the second reading, and it will become final.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. And we are on to resolution item number two. We already voted on number one. Twenty nineteen dash thirty-seven, accepting release of right-of-way easement from Madison Gas and Electric and granting an underground electric and gas main easement to Madison Gas and Electric Company at Milton Municipal Airport, Morifield.
Motion to approve the release of the current easement and the approval of the new easement.
All right, need a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? They're just taking away one and giving the other. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. The motion to go in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to go in closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So we are in closed session.